So today, we're looking to provide an update on our buildings for our future elementary school renovation projects. Specifically, the areas of information for today are the impact of the Green New Deal to the project, the scope of the renovations, the current schedule to complete the design, and strategy to bid the projects. Earlier in the fall, many of you participated in a workshop that updated you on the community engagement efforts in the renovations and the challenges that we foresaw being posed by the potential passage of the Green New Deal referendum. Since then, there have been developments in our understanding of the Green New Deal's applicability to our work. And as a result, today, you had a first read on a proposal to authorize us to bid the three projects. This workshop will review what we've learned about the Green New Deal and update you on the projects and timelines involved. And I will be joined by our Harriman Architect Team of Mark Lee and Lisa Solin and our attorney, Aga Dixon, along with our Facilities Director, Steve Stelfen, and Coordinator Doug Sherwood. Then we will be coming back to you for approval to go to bid on December 22nd. And so with that, if you can queue up the PowerPoint. Mark?
All right. Can everyone see? Yep?
Yep. You're not in presentation mode yet, but...
Yeah, I'll go into presentation mode here. All right. Thank you. As Javier said, we've got a lot of material to cover to bring everyone up to speed from our last meeting, as well as really the last update that we gave to the board on the BFOF project. And so there are several agenda items. The first one, we're going to sort of roll right into it here, and that is the one on the Green New Deal, which we will allow Ms. Panet from Drummond and Woodsum to walk us through the salient points of the impact of Question C on the BFOF projects. And so I'll turn it over to Aga.
Thank you, Mark. Hi, everybody. Nice to be with you all again. As you know, we had been, during our last discussion, we had, there had been a number of questions and issues raised as to that we should continue to explore with respect to the applicability of the Green New Deal energy efficiency provisions to the renovation projects. And so we looked back at the applicable requirements in the Green New Deal and expanded our view a little bit beyond what the actual amendments were to the Green New Deal to look at the code as a whole. And we also discovered and received some additional informations from the city tax assessor that have actually combined led us to a very different answer than what I had originally provided to you in my October opinion. And the answer, as you know, from having received the revised opinion, is that we now believe that all three projects are exempt from needing to comply with the new better roof standard, the most recently published lead silver standard, and the most recently published ashray energy improvement standard. And as you're aware, those are the three energy efficiency standards in the Green New Deal referendum question that led us to raise a concern that those additional requirements would cost up to $6 million more in project construction costs. So the good news is that we don't believe those three items apply, and my revised opinion kind of goes into the legal details of that. But the bottom line is that there is an applicability provision in the city's building code that was not touched by the Green New Deal. And after some further research and consultation, we've concluded that that applicability provision exempts the three, all three projects from these standards. The reason being that the applicability provision basically says that a project is grandfathered from any amendments to the green building code, and only to the green building code, if a site plan review application is submitted before the effective date of those amendments. So we were able to submit site plan review applications and get those accepted as complete by the city planning department before the effective date of Question C, which was on just a couple of days ago, on December 6th. So because we were able to get those submitted and accepted as complete, this grandfathering rule allows us to, it allows us to be exempt from the new provisions of the green building code. And then in addition, we looked into, more carefully into, the text of the definition of renovation. If you recall, the, one of the threshold questions that we had been exploring was whether these are qualified as renovation projects under the sort of unusual definition that is in the building code, in the city's building code. And under that odd kind of unusual definition, a project is considered a renovation if, at the time of application, the total construction cost is greater than or equal to the market value of the property as determined by the city's tax assessor. So up to this point, we had been using the assessed values of the three properties and comparing those to the mark, to the total estimated construction costs. And as you know, those total estimated construction costs were significantly higher than the assessed values. We were able to, however, get a written statement from the city's tax assessor that explained that those assessed values are not an accurate representation of the fair market value of these properties. And the actual current property values that the city tax assessor is using as part, essentially as part of the revaluation process throughout the city, are significantly higher than what the assessed values are on the books. To the point where at least one of the projects, the Reiki project, that property value is higher than the total estimated construction cost. And because it is higher, by definition, under the green building code, it does not qualify as a renovation, and therefore, none of those provisions apply. So our conclusion essentially is that, you know, it's our view that all three projects are not subject to those three new standards under the Green New Deal, both because the site plan applications were submitted ahead of the applicability date of December 6th, and because for the Reiki project, at least the property valuation exceeds the total estimated construction cost. So I'm happy to take questions, if you have any, about that analysis.
Just in general, can I say that what we'd like to do is for the board members to go ahead and ask questions as we go through these different sections? So not wait until the end. We want us to be more informal and an opportunity for you to ask questions in dialogue. Any questions on the Green New Deal?
I have a question. Can you explain a little bit about this exemption from the city? The Green Deal, the exemption, what does that indicate?
Yeah. Go ahead, Javier.
Now, what it essentially means, Mr. Youssef, is that because we are exempted from the requirements of this new, of the new referendum provisions, that we can proceed with the plans that we have been making over the last year to move forward with the projects. If we had, if they had been, if we were not exempted, we would have had to pause our process and go back to the community to figure out what are the things that we would be able to do, given that we would now have to incorporate some new requirements that were not in our view when we started the process. So the exemption allows us to move forward with the plan that we have been putting forward, if, you know, and which we're going to be talking about in great details shortly, sort of walking through each of the schools and what the, what the plans look like for those schools, as well as the process of going out to bid and the timeline for getting those projects. But this was critical to us because if we had had to conform to those requirements, we would have had to pause our process to basically change our design to conform to those new requirements.
May I add one thing? Just, I think it's important to, for the board and for the newborn members to know that these projects still will be very, very environmentally friendly. All three schools will meet LEED silver standards, which is a strong environmental standard, and it looks like we're going to get to that. But just to be clear, that we're, we were at the very tail end of designing these projects, and so that's because we had already submitted the applications. That's why we're not going to go back to the drawing board and redo the plans, because we're so far in the process. And then the schools, in addition, will meet, you know, strong environmental standards. I just wanted to add to that, and it looks like we're going to...
That's the next slide in our, in our presentation, is, you know, the what is, you know, what is remaining in the project that is sort of capturing the intent of the Green New Deal provisions. Any other questions about the applicability before we move into this?
I can't find my raised hand. Could I just clarify? I know you mentioned, is it Aga? I'm sorry, am I saying your name correctly?
Aga.
Aga, I'm sorry, Aga. I know you mentioned the December 6th date of submitting, right? And I just wanted to clarify, just with hearing some of the issue about the planning board and their process. So, so the submitting was really the issue, it sounds like, but do we have any more concern? And if Mark needs to share this later, that's fine. I just wanted to understand the process, because I know there's some having to go to the planning board and then coming back with feedback and those details, and then he may be talking about that later, but just wanted to get that clear.
Yeah, no, that's a really good question. We had originally been very concerned about the applicability of this, the Green New Deal. We knew that the standards would go into effect 30 days after the vote was certified by the city, so that's, that's how we get to December 6th. And originally, we had been under the assumption that both site plan review approval and a building permit application would need to be filed in order to be grandfathered. And under the schedule for these projects, doing those two things would have been impossible to achieve within the December 6 deadline. What, what I realized after digging into the language a little bit more, in more detail, is that the applicability provision actually does not require that we file a building permit, but only requires us to file, to submit a site plan application for the project in order to be grandfathered. So that, that language is very clear in the applicability provision, and we're able to, you know, use that to reach the conclusion that we're grandfathered, because those, all three site plan reviews have been submitted.
Okay, thank you. So that would negate the need for any back and forth, it's just the submitting part didn't have further than that?
That's right. We don't, we don't need a substantive review, which is the sort of default rule of construction for these applicability provisions. But if the, if the rule itself is clear and unambiguous on its face, which this one, I believe, is, then you don't have to get to that default rule of having some kind of substantial or substantive review by the planning board. You can simply rely on what the language in the ordinance or in the code says. And in this case, in Portland, what the code says is, so long as you've submitted your application, and so, so long as you've submitted your site plan application, you're grandfathered.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And let me just add, that does not mean that plans have been reviewed and approved, and we have the permits, we're just in that process, and there will be a series of steps that Mark can provide more details on, or Steve, if anybody is interested, but that's, just want to be clear, that's not approval. It just means we met that for applicability purposes. So then, to Ms. Figdor's point, we just wanted to highlight the fact that we are meeting aspects of the Green New Deal in principle, if not in, you know, sort of in the specifics of the, of the language. And so one is the fair contracting provisions. The board, back in 2017, when we moved forward with the Lyseth project, voted to use the fair, fair contracting standards as the requirements for, for all of the projects. At the time, we were only bidding Lyseth, but that vote was to comprehensively do that for the buildings for our future. So we have all along entertained doing this, which includes fair wage rates and other provisions that either Steve or Mark can provide additional details around, that would be built into the specifications for the contracts. So the things that you would be approving, that you will be approving on the 22nd, or will be asking you to approve on the 22nd. And then also, as we mentioned, we are, we have been designing all along with the LEED silver standards that are currently in place as the benchmark, and we will continue to meet that. We will not be striving to meet the new requirements or the ashray, the latest ashray standard. So there's, you know, I don't know the details of it. Again, Mark, Steve can fill you in on how those are different, but we will continue to meet the high standards that were in place prior to the Green New Deal referendum.
Very good.
Any questions on that before we dive into the budget and the projects themselves? Because I just want to point out, Aga will be signing off and leaving us, so if you have any questions about Green New Deal, we will not have our incredible attorney around to be able to answer them, and that leaves you with me.
Madam Chair.
It looks like Ms. Russell Better has her question. Go ahead, Ora.
Thanks. So, Aga, I don't know if this is for you or not, but since you're here and you're the legal expert, do we, do we know anything or have concerns about any challenge from people first Portland about the legal interpretation?
No, I don't think we are aware of any challenges or concerns about this. I understand that this, this issue is actually a pretty black and white one. It's not a situation where, you know, if some of the other sort of concerns about, you know, how the minimum wage provision is being treated by the city, it, this is really, it's in a very unique situation, and the, the legal conclusions that we've reached here won't affect many other projects, if any other projects, to be honest with you, because it really comes down to who was in the queue for site plan review when Question C was being voted on. So I don't suspect, I mean, it's hard to say if anybody will come out of the woodworks, but we've certainly not heard that, and I don't, I don't really expect that to be an issue here, both because of our, our unique, the unique position of these projects as having been in the works for quite, quite some time before this law, this revision to the ordinance was enacted, and also because frankly, the school, the school department is doing quite a bit above and beyond what is required by the code anyway, both in terms of, you know, environmental, energy efficiency construction, as well as the fair wage standards that, you know, you're already, you've already built into those projects even before the Green New Deal was enacted. So I, to the, I can't really guarantee it, but I don't see it as a huge risk.
That's helpful, thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes, Madam Chair, I didn't know whether or not for Mark and Emily and for others, if we wanted to have the new board members just introduce themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, you beat me to it. So as we transition to the Harriman team, we have three new board members, and if you could each introduce yourself to the Harriman team, who you'll be seeing and hearing from as we move forward our school renovation projects, I think that would be helpful for them, so they can know who you are, and, and also just be aware that you're, Ora is, Ms. Russell Better is very familiar with this process, but it's a lot of new information for the new board members, so we can help get you up to speed as well.
Hi, Jeff Iris, District 5.
Hi, Youssef, Youssef, at large.
Ora, Russell Better, you guys know me, you're amazing, thanks.
When I have students also introduce themselves, I, I'm curious, I know that all of them went to Lincoln Middle School, but I don't know if any of them went to Longfellow, or I guess it would be only Longfellow that is in the, that would feed Lincoln.
Excellent. So students, will you introduce yourselves as well and tell us if you attended Longfellow?
My name is Emily Chung, and I attended Hall School.
My name is Tessa Boxer-McLumber, I went to East End.
And I think that's it. I know that Abby's computer booted her off, she emailed me, so we need to take care of that, and...
I see Haley over as an attendee. Let me see if I can promote to a panelist. My first ever promotion to a panelist, successful. So Haley, will you introduce yourself real fast to the Harriman team? There are architects working on our four school renovations. And let us know if you went to Longfellow.
So obviously, my name is Haley, I didn't grow up in Portland, so I didn't go into any of the elementary schools.
Gotcha, thank you.
It's very nice to meet all of you, and I don't know if we already lost Aga, but thank you very much for her legal counsel through all of this, so it's been, it's been illuminating.
Thanks, everyone. So I'm going to log off, it was nice to meet everybody, and I am a graduate of Reiki Elementary School, so.
Very good. Again, as we, as we have a lot of items, we'll try to be thorough, but brief, I guess. So the, moving through the next item is the project budget, and, and so we have, have sort of, the way we look at the project budget, there's two components to it, the construction cost, and that's everything that we pay the contractor to, to build in the renovation and addition projects. And then there are a bunch of other fees that are in part of the project as well. So we refer to the construction cost sometimes as hard costs, and then we refer to the other costs as soft costs. And so both those hard and soft costs make up the project budget. And these, and so what, what comes first are the construction costs, and those are built on what we estimate the, the scope of the work is going to cost us. And so, and, and those were really built on the scopes that we looked at back in the spring with the school board, and we said, and we were working with the district advisory building committee, and trying to understand, we had a, we had a certain amount of money that we could spend, and how were we going to divide it up equitably, and we'll get into some of those discussions. But the, these apportionments of the BFOF funds are really designed to accomplish the equity goals that we established at the, in the spring, as we sat there and looked at what construction costs were, and we evaluated the priorities of the projects and trying to accomplish the most we could in, in the, with the available funds. And so, so for the Longfellow, the construction cost that we've been budgeting has been 10.5 million, and that's been consistent, these numbers have been consistent from the spring in terms of our, our defined budgets that we're working within. And, and so that, the hard cost of 10.5 equates to approximately a total project cost of 14 million, so that's about a, the 25% for the soft costs, and 75% of it are the hard costs. The Presum Scott Elementary School, the, the estimated construction budget is 9.75 million, with a total project budget of 13 million. And then for the Reiki School, the one that has the most interior work and the larger area that we are renovating, it's 15.75 million, and, in construction costs, and 21 million for the total project costs. So I will pause for a moment before moving on. Very good. So Lisa is now going to talk us, or bring us through the evolution of the community engagement process that we undertook, and we had begun that last fall, and, and completed it this October with the community and stakeholder outreach. So I will then, I think Lisa is on, Lisa?
I am, good evening. Great to see everyone and meet several of you for the first time. Yes, the community engagement process and stakeholder engagement has been going on throughout the process with different stakeholder groups, as well as the public at large. The different stakeholder groups that we've been working with are the DABC, or District Advisory Board Committee, or the BLAC, the Building Level Advisory Committee. The BLAC are the building level advisory committees for each of the schools. So they're made up of community members for Presum Scott, Reiki, and Longfellow. And then the DABC is the advisory board that oversees all three of the BLACs. So we go to the BLACs to provide information, they provide recommendations to the DABC, and then ultimately, the DABC brings recommendations to the board in different situations. So those are the two major stakeholder groups. So essentially, there's four groups that we're meeting with throughout this process to make sure that we connect with each of the communities in each of these schools and the community at large. Public engagement, so we've had several community forums, as Mark said, they started back in fall of 2019. Um, as Mark, uh, said, they started back in fall of 2019. Um, and we've had three of them, um, our last one, uh, in October of 2020. Um, and we'll go over each of those, um, community forums here in a minute. We've also had monthly, uh, BLAC meetings and DABC meetings. And those are separate BLAC meetings for each of the, the schools. So public engagement, the first community forum really dealt with defining or crafting, as we like to say, the design statement for each of the schools. And for us, this is a great way for us to get a pulse on the values of each of the school communities. Um, and what we do is we go through a process of defining, um, the essence of the school. So this example here is the essence of Longfellow. And the group, um, we divide them into, uh, several groups. They come up with words and, um, essentially come forward with the top words that everyone's voted on that capture the essence of Longfellow. And those words were, um, they, they sometimes turn into phrases, as you can see on this example. Um, neighborhood center, community integrated into the neighborhood was the first bullet point. The second one was walkability, and the third was historic asset slash architecture. So the group really felt that captured, um, the essence of the school itself as well as what, um, they wanted the school to become through this addition. And then, um, before we, uh, had broke folks into groups, we, uh, gave a presentation on the project itself as well as, uh, best practices in 21st century, um, learning environments. Um, and really looking at, uh, different types of spaces, um, and imagery related to those spaces and, and best practices, whether it had to do with social, emotional learning, connection to outdoors, um, connection to nature. Um, and so everyone had all of these images and each of the groups came up with their top three images, sometimes six. Um, and ultimately that captured, um, as we like to say, a picture tells a thousand words of, of what of those images they felt captured that essence. And from there, we, um, challenge each of the groups to come up with what we call a design statement. So taking the words and the images and crafting a statement that, uh, captures, uh, what, uh, the essence of the school is, but what it is to become through this design. Um, and so each of them came up with one, and then we take all of those and craft them into one final statement. And for Longfellow, that was, uh, their design statement read, nurturing the roots of community to grow the hearts and minds of learners for a dynamic world. So really beautiful statement, um, created at Longfellow. Again, allows us as we're designing to really look back and reflect on, okay, what, um, I think it's a license, I apologize, Longfellow. Um, and really look at, um, what's important, uh, to the community. And also when we get to certain decision points, we always reflect on, um, on the statement, and it helps us kind of navigate different decisions in the lens of the community. The next one is Presum Scott. So same process. Um, at Presum Scott, the community came up with, um, three words that captured the essence of Presum Scott, which are community, collaborative and welcoming. You can see the four images that rose to the top. Um, like the upper left had to do with learning commons and variety of spaces. Um, connection to outdoors is the top right. Um, community gathering spaces is the lower left. Um, and, uh, connection to, to natural light and welcoming entry is the lower right. Um, their design statement reads, "A welcoming diverse family creating safe spaces for learners to collaborate, grow and explore." And last but not least was Reiki's. Um, so Reiki, uh, had chosen, the Reiki community chose, uh, celebrating diversity, integration into the urban fabric and inclusive. And, um, you can see that they really connected with several images that we had shared, um, in the presentation. Um, everything from welcoming entries to variety of, uh, social, emotional spaces, connection to outdoors, um, and STEM or project-based learning spaces. Their statement read, "To create an inclusive environment that celebrates diversity, fosters collaboration, embraces nature and integrates into the urban fabric." And so as we were working, um, with the, uh, different, uh, community groups at each of the schools, the BLACs and the DABC, to really define the scope of work, um, we had started with the BFOF, um, scope of work and the equity, um, uh, list that it had come up with originally. And you can see that equity list in the green bubble, um, around capacity, accessibility, separate gymnasiums, security, music rooms, art rooms, outdoor learning, sprinklers and fire alarm, vehicular pedestrian improvements, small group learning, special ed spaces and performance space. And you can see the charge of the, the BFOF on the right-hand side. And so as we went through this process, um, similar to those that followed along with the Lyseth project, uh, what was defined in the BFOF was a certain scope for a certain dollar amount. And when we went through Lyseth, um, it became apparent, uh, very quickly that the, um, the dollars that were set aside for that project I did not, uh, were not able to support the scope, um, that was defined, uh, due to escalation. Um, escalation had been accounted for, but it was greater, um, than, uh, what was predicted. And in that process, we had gone through a, a process of, of really prioritizing, um, uh, what, uh, elements would be in the building, um, with using that equity lens. We had done the similar thing with Longfellow, Reiki and Presum Scott. Um, but even with that first paring down of, or sort of equity lens, I should say, um, we found that, uh, the, the current market could not support that. And went through a process with the DABC to really look at, um, what, what are the scope elements that we'll move forward with. Um, and we defined several, um, uh, priorities across the board, but really wanted to, um, identify what were the highest priority facility needs at each of the schools and be able to, um, work with each school to really define what is, what are their highest needs and make sure that those rise to the top. And so the next couple of slides, you'll see the summary that we came up with to really define the, uh, scope of work as we moved forward on each of those projects. So for Longfellow, um, the highest priorities were classroom upgrades and abatement, secure accessible entrance, elevator, um, also can be expanded to say, um, accessibility upgrades, and then the code and accessibility upgrades to the building itself. On the next slide, uh, Presum Scott, um, highest priority facility needs. Um, number one was replace the modular classrooms. So there are several classrooms that are on exterior, modulars outside the main building. And so replacing those with an addition so that all the students are within the building. Provide a secure and welcoming entrance. Uh, create a separate gym and cafeteria. Create a separate music and art room. And, um, separate rooms for specialists and code and accessibility upgrades. And then at Reiki, um, the number one, uh, thing was enclose the classrooms. Um, we definitely, uh, heard this, uh, in almost every conversation we had, whether it be with the BLAC or the teacher interviews. Um, it was resounding, um, support for providing walls, doors for the classroom and really enclosing those spaces. So that was the number one, um, priority. And then from there, it was secure accessible entrance. Um, move the music, uh, program onto the school side of the building and provide code and accessibility upgrades.
Can we pause on that and make sure that, um, there aren't any questions before we move into the, the schedule and the timeline?
Absolutely.
I also just sent, um, the new board members, uh, the document that outlines the governance structure that is in place. I just realized as we were talking about the BLACs and the DABCs and so on, that, um, you may not, um, know what those are. I know that Ms. Russell Better does, but I'm not sure that everyone else does. So I just sent that to you. And if you have any questions about it after you get a chance to read it, be happy to walk you through that. Let's move on, Lisa, then.
I think Mark's gonna take us through the project update.
So the, uh, schedule that we have before you is an updated schedule. And that takes into account the, uh, delay that, uh, we had in understanding if and what the impact of the Green New Deal would be to the project. And so we originally, uh, we'll show you the original schedule on the next slide. But right now, um, what, what we're looking to do is, uh, complete the construction documents, which are the, the documents that we need to prepare to have, uh, contractors price the renovations. Uh, and so those are the, the sort of foundational documents that they will use to guide them in building it. And so they, that's the next process we have is to complete those, those, uh, documents that encapsulate all of the design elements and all the technical requirements that we're asking the contractor to, to build from. So those, uh, construction documents, sometimes we refer to them as CDs, but, um, we are, um, in, in now resuming the, um, completion of those. We, with an anticipated bid of the first school project in February. Um, the second school project, and, and we'll talk a little bit further in the presentation on, on what that order might look like. The second school project is, um, in the March timeframe. And then the third bid, uh, which is asking the contractors to price it, that bid, um, period, the third one is in April. So, um, so that's what's proposed right now with the starting of all three of them in the spring, summer, uh, of 2021. So that's, uh, that right there is kind of this, this from, from where we are right now in December until the, uh, until June, that's our schedule, is really completing the construction documents and moving to, um, getting the, um, contractors on board. Um, and, uh, and then, uh, looking forward to the start of construction in the spring. Uh, so in there, we will continue to have updates, uh, as necessary with the various committees. Uh, and, um, I, and, uh, share information, uh, as we go through that. So, um, the, and that, this, this differs again slightly from our previous, uh, schedule where we had, uh, the bidding occurring right now with an award in, uh, January and construction in spring. So we really, uh, we're still targeting the spring construction. That hasn't changed. So it's changed as we, the bidding is moving out, uh, a little bit into, um, February through, through March. And I'll pause again in a moment if there are any questions.
Can I just add, you know, that you, you referenced the fact that we're gonna talk a little bit about that staggering and the, um, the actual order of the projects a little bit later in the agenda. So, um, we will be coming back to that particular point.
Very good. So the, now we'll, we'll take a little deeper dive into the various, uh, scopes of the work to be done at each project. So as Lisa identified, the highest priority needs at Longfellow centered around the classroom upgrades and, and, uh, and abatement. And, uh, and, and indeed, that's the scheme that was carried forward, uh, from all the options that we looked at. We really focused what was called the classroom option. And that focused on improvements to, to primarily to the classroom areas. And so, um, and so with Longfellow, again, it's, it's, um, a full renovation, if you will, of the classroom areas. And, and that means new ceilings with new lighting, new instructional technology, uh, new flooring. Um, and, uh, and then there's some casework upgrades as well in the classrooms. Um, there's, uh, a new secure entrance that, uh, uh, will be added to the parking lot side of the building. An elevator to be able to circulate, uh, through all three levels of the building. And, um, and then miscellaneous code and accessibility upgrades throughout the building. Um, accessibility upgrades, uh, will, um, center also around toilet room upgrades. And so providing, uh, providing accessible toilets as well as individual user toilets. And while this is a small little thumbnail, it looks like, of, of a plan, um, here, the green indicates new construction, the anticipated additions to the building. This is the lowest level of Longfellow. Uh, and the gray areas are broken out into very light renovation, which is a very light gray color, and a slightly deeper gray color, which is the light renovation. And so those aren't getting reconfigured. They're primarily getting building system upgrades. And then there's the blue areas, which are a more intense renovation area. And so, uh, the lower level, what's planned is there are learning spaces uh, in the lower left corner of, of the building that, uh, we are going to build new spaces and, and move them out of, of an area that's primarily sub, subterranean or subgrade. And we're gonna move those into the addition where they are full daylight, uh, spaces. And so they'll have, they'll have appropriate ventilation and natural light and views to the outside. Uh, and so, um, so the, the programs, um, are gonna go up, uh, on the, um, upper left of the page on the addition where it's identified as reading and ELL, gifted and talented. And then what we will do is take the spaces where those programs currently reside, and we'll convert them to, uh, toilet rooms. We also are showing, uh, in this, a cafeteria and warming kitchen, which are desired additions on Longfellow as well. The first floor, I, has a, uh, if, if we sort of look from the upper left again, we have, um, the addition will have a pre-K room, uh, which currently, um, we don't have at Longfellow. And, um, and then the spaces to the, to the right of, uh, the addition are just the upper level of the, um, the cafeteria. Uh, and then the blue areas are more significant renovations. And so, um, the, um, kindergarten rooms get, get a, uh, a full, uh, heavy renovation. The teachers' room and toilet rooms get full renovations. And then as we move across the front of the building, and Stevens Ave is on the, the bottom of the page, parallel with the building, uh, we are creating a series of, uh, individual spaces for administration functions as well as some of the specials, uh, specialists, such as the OTPT, uh, creating a room for them. Um, and then we have, uh, a, a series of offices, um, that we're, uh, creating where those spaces right now are currently shared in classrooms. They don't have individual, uh, acoustically isolated rooms. Uh, and so, um, so that, that is, is, originally those were classrooms on the front of Longfellow and were, were subdivided at times, but they were never, um, they never separated out. All the, um, ventilation and, and the heating, uh, weren't made separate for the individual spaces. And so those are gonna, gonna be separated. And the primary administration area is also going to create a security vestibule. So like we're doing with all of the elementary school projects, we're creating the, um, uh, a locked vestibule where visitors come in, uh, and they are, um, vetted before entering the building itself. And, uh, and so we're reconfiguring the steps and the ramp to the parking lot side, which is that green area that you see, um, on the right-hand side next to where it says first floor. The second level, it said second floor, it's actually the third level, um, has the scope of renovations to the classrooms that we discussed and the toilet rooms. Uh, you can see the elevator goes in the, uh, in the corner of the courtyard. Uh, and, uh, and that again goes on all three levels. And then we have, we're taking the last room, classroom, uh, we have to create a corridor to access the elevator, but we're also creating a series of toilet rooms, a, um, a break room and a, a resource room with the, um, space from the, uh, classroom itself. And that, that, uh, scope of work has been very consistent from our, um, beginnings. So we've, we've vetted the number of spaces that are required. And we've gone through and confirmed that we, um, are providing, uh, the spaces for the programs that are being offered. We also looked at, uh, the fact that we do have a very defined budget. We looked at what, if, if we were able to afford some additional scope, what would that additional scope, um, be, uh, and how would it be prioritized? And that was a process that we evaluated with, uh, the building level advisory committees. building-level advisory committees and reported it to the district advisory building committee. So the, the alternate, alternate scope items were identified as a new HVAC system. So that's currently, these are items that are not in our base scope of work. So a new HVAC system for the, for the school itself, we're putting new one in the spaces that are getting heavy renovation and the additions. But by and large, the classrooms that, that are being renovated are maintaining the same HVAC system that they have now. The windows were another item that is a series of frustration at Longfellow. They're very large windows and difficult to operate, and a lot of that has been improved through some of the CARES Act funding. And, and so while we aren't replacing the windows, which would be very expensive, we're looking at ways that we can improve the operability of the windows. The third item is absent an entire new mechanical or ventilation system for the building, was simply to upgrade or replace the units that are on the exterior wall that bring in the fresh air and heating, heat it. And it would be to actually provide some that potentially could both heat and cool into the classrooms. And the fourth item that was considered is the exterior masonry, which is a beautiful, a feature of Longfellow, and it's starting to show signs of distress, particularly on some of the north elevations of the building. The last, the last three are classroom wing nodes, as we call them. They're individual learning, small learning spaces that occur in the hallways. The item six was the controls for, for the mechanical systems, and so they, to convert them to electronic so they can be programmed and controlled more easily. And the last item was interior doors. There are a series of doors that we are replacing, but this would be replace all the interior doors. So the, there was a consistent, uniform new image to the hallways as you move through the building. The diagram on this looks at the, the site, the site logistics, if you will, during construction. And, and so Stevens Ave is down again at the bottom of the page, and you can see this sort of U shape of Longfellow. And what will happen is the, we will construct a series of modular buildings, or we'll place them in the parking lot, and they're shown as rectangles with a diagonal stripe, orange diagonal stripe. People can see my mouse. But that is going to create the swing space as we go through and renovate the buildings. So during the renovation, we will take a series of classrooms and we'll take them offline, move the students to the portable classrooms or the modular classrooms, and then we will renovate those classrooms that are vacated. And then we will move students that were in the portables back into the building and move a new series of classrooms out to the modules. And so we do that throughout the course of the construction to create swing space and renovate the building. While that is happening, we will, we will create a, a safety zone around those modulators, but we will also maintain the traffic through the parking lot to the degree that we can. And, and so that will still occur off of Concord Street. And then there is the addition on the rear of the site. So, so the dashed black line indicates where we're going to seal off the site for the contractors to do all their work and lay down their equipment. And so that's really going to be on the backside of the, of the site, and they will access the, down through the Deering parking lot. But we will still maintain some access to the playgrounds, to the side of the building where they exist now, but we'll, we'll lose for a period of time some of the space behind the building. And I will pause for a moment.
Mark, I have a question.
Yeah, Emily.
Um, Longfellow, and I'm not, I haven't attended any of the Longfellow building-level advisory committees meetings recently, so I'm less familiar with the, the details around staging. But Longfellow has such a special area at the back of the school that's used as outdoor learning spaces. And so that will be off limits as part of the construction staging area.
Yeah, it, it is. And so there's a sort of sloped area of the, of the building with outdoor learning, which is kind of occurs over on, on this area of the site itself. And so some of that will be where we're creating that safety zone for the contractor to come in and put their equipment, because the addition right now shows, it kind of tucks in and disturbs a little bit of that space, that tiered amphitheater type seating that goes down the hill.
And then to the extent that those are natural, you know, that those are green spaces, will they be, will they be restored as green spaces after the construction is done?
Yeah, they, there is, where, where we are disturbing, we are going to go back and enhance what those spaces have for landscaping and recycle as much of that, those natural elements as we can. And then in, in the rear of the, rear of the building, the only impact we have is that there is going to be some additional paved, pavement in the, in the back of the building that to access the warming kitchen. But, but the majority of the space, the green open space that's used for recreation in the back is going to, going to remain untouched.
Okay, thank you so much.
So the phasing for Longfellow, alluded to, but it, it, because we're moving the classrooms out and we're doing six classrooms at a time, it takes a little while to get through the full building, as well as there's only so much construction we can do in the building while we allow the building to be, to be operational. So that, it's a phased construction similar to what Lyseth is experiencing right now. And, and so the, it starts with the summer, getting as much work done as we can in the summer of 2021. But then in the fall, we move those six classrooms out, and we then do the renovations to those spaces, as I said. And so we're going to continue to do those through 30 months of construction. So that encompasses three summers and two school years. And, and so that, that really gives you a sense. And that, and that roughly is the same schedule that Lyseth had in terms of the, the 30-month construction duration. So it will start in the summer of 2021, and if all goes well, it'll be ready for the fall of 2023, which we think after waiting this long through the BFOF effort is, is sort of going to go by like with a blink of an eye. And this just shows the, the intent to have a very, a light touch at the entrance to Longfellow. And so the, it's a beloved architectural style for the building, and we want to just complement that and make sure that we're being sympathetic to the existing architecture where we're modifying for the entrance itself. On the, on the rear of the building, we actually want to contrast a little bit with the more elaborate ornate historic feel to the building. And so we contrast it with a style that simplifies the way that we articulate openings to the building, but the materiality and the scaling is intended to be similar to, to the existing building. So we want to be referential and not mimic the style of the building itself, but this gives a sense of what it might look like at the rear of, of the building after the addition is added on. So the, the lower level are the two learning spaces. The upper level is the pre-K room, and then there's a stair to get, get down to the, from the, what is the main level on Stevens Ave, down to this, the lower level here. And then to the left, you see the addition of the, what's shown as a cafeteria with a large window that opens out to the green space in the back of the building. And so I'll pause for a moment. That's Longfellow. Lisa is going to take us through the same description of the changes proposed for Presum Scott.
Wait a second, see if there's any questions before I move on. Not seeing any. So thank you, Mark. The, as I reviewed earlier, the priorities for Presum Scott are the six that you see here on the screen, the replacement of the modulators, welcoming entrance, separate gym and cafeteria, separate music and art rooms, separate rooms for specialists, code and accessibility upgrades. And so similar color delineation is the Longfellow plan. The green is the new construction, and the blue is what we call heavy renovation, and the gray is a very light renovation, mostly code upgrades where you're seeing the very light. The blue means we've had to modify some, some walls in order to accommodate the program elements, and the green is obviously new buildings. What you're seeing, well, Presum Scott is all on one level. The lower right-hand side is where the main entrance will, is right now and will remain. We will be adding on to the front of the school, very similar to Lyseth, for those that are familiar with that. It's an administrative addition. So it will have a secure entrance and a secure welcoming entrance, as well as the admin suite, as we refer to it, with reception and waiting, the principal office, a conference room, and a nurse area. And that is adjacent to some major renovations that are occurring in that area where you have specialist offices, you have OTPT. And then flanking that on the left-hand side is the staff workroom and toilets. And then the right, when you walk through the secure vestibule is the main lobby. The other renovation areas are, the existing warming kitchen will be converted into a sensory space for the students, which is a program element that they have right now in the school. And we'll be renovating the toilet rooms and the ELL classroom in the back of the school, with a series of smaller spaces back there that we've opened up to be able to accommodate that program. The addition in the back of the school is a series of classrooms added on to the building. So you have the pre-K and kindergarten classrooms, right where the cursor is right now, with connections and views to the outside. You have Title I and Instructional Math Coach or offices right there. As you come down the hallway, we have a lobby just right outside the new cafeteria space, which is a nice way of being able to introduce some natural light into that space. And then we have the separate music and art rooms up to the upper right-hand side. The cafeteria has a warming kitchen, and two other spaces across from the kindergarten rooms are the literature and speech, lit coach and speech area, as well as the end of the corridor, right where the cursor is, creates a nest space, as well as the other lobby on the other side of the building, right there, two nest areas. And what those are, small group learning pull-off spaces to provide a variety of, of learning spaces within the school. So this was able to address the high priority elements for Presum Scott of taking those classrooms that are outside and bringing them in. So right where the portables are now is where that back addition is going, as well as providing separate art and music spaces and a separate gym and cafeteria, were the, the major ones in addition to a secure entrance and code accessibility upgrades. So reviewing the alternates with the BLAC, those elements that if, if the project comes in under budget, what would be those items that we would want to fold into the project? And the BLAC helped us rank these in priority order. For them, number one would be a new HVAC system throughout the school. The additions that we'd be putting on as part of this project would have new HVAC systems to serve those spaces. This would provide it throughout the school. Number two would be new unit ventilators. So really, those are, the new HVAC system essentially would, would encompass a whole comprehensive system. If that can't be afforded, their next alternate they would want to explore is replacing the unit ventilators that were at the existing school. From there, it would be replacing interior doors and associated hardware. And number four would be renovate existing hallways. So new finishes within the hallways to brighten up the, the hallways and provide a comprehensive design throughout the school. Number five would be a new DDC system or direct digital controls, which allows us to efficiently operate the HVAC system. And there was a tie for number six, and the tie was classroom wing nodes. And I'm not sure that everyone is aware what that means. We did something similar at the Lyseth Elementary School. We created these nodes, as we call them, I think of them as identifiers of an area that identifies different classroom wings. So in this school, similar to Lyseth, we've set up the wings of the school to be grade level. And so these nodes would provide a place that would identify that you're entering a new grade level, as well as providing space to be able to meet one-on-one with a teacher or, or coach outside the classroom. The other one that tied with the classroom wing nodes is the exterior wall masonry, and that would be adding insulation to increase the R value of the existing envelope of the So the site logistics during construction are represented on the screen here. The, the nice thing about Presum Scott is the existing portables, when we relocate those, we can use those as a swing space during construction. And so once those are relocated to where you can see on the lower left-hand side of the screen, oh, sorry, lower right-hand side of the screen, we can start to build that addition out back, as well as building the addition out front. So we'll temporarily relocate the entrance to the building, to the north side of the page, as well as the egress out of the south side of the page for, during construction. When we get into the phasing diagram here in a minute, you'll see that Presum Scott, because it's mostly additions, it impacts the existing school the least. And so there's less moving around within the school that happens during construction. So the additions are built during the year after the portables are relocated. And then during the summers, we can do a lot of the connection work between the additions, as well as some of the renovations within the school itself. So the phasing for Presum Scott looks to start in the summer of 2021 and be complete by the fall of 2022. So it has the shortest duration, again, because we don't have to move many classrooms around in order to do the scope of work in the school. So Phase One, Summer 2021 to Fall 2022, really have to do with that relocation of the modulators and the building of the additions. And then Phase One B overlaps Phase One through the Summer of 2022 into the Fall of 2022. And those would be the interior renovations that you saw in the blue, as well as some of the code upgrades throughout the school. And then once all of the additions are done, the modulators will be removed and the site work as to where they were located will be repaired, and the project, if everything goes according to plan, will be completed. And so here is a rendering of the front entrance to Presum Scott. So adding on that admin addition, you can see the left-hand side where there's what we call ribbon windows and a lighter colored brick is the existing building. And then where there's a little bit darker colored brick is where the addition starts. So really giving Presum Scott a fun identity with what architects call butterfly roof. And so a very unique entrance to the school provides lots of natural light into it. And then you have the admin wing over to the right-hand side, as well as some landscaping and site features out front of the school. as well as some landscaping and site features out front of the school.
Use the term the admin wing in both of the bills. And I just want to make sure that, that everyone understands that that is, that's where obviously the principal's office is, but it's also the main entrance for people into the buildings. So the school secretary reception area and as well as the nurse and, you know, social worker and other key specials positions are also located in that area.
That's a great point, Javier. Thank you for clarifying that. And we definitely put them out front here too, so that they have better visibility on the front of the school.
All right, well, we're going through the scope of the last of the three elementary schools in this project, and that's Reiki. And again, we heard loud and clear, classrooms that are actually rooms. And, and so that's the highest priority and where a lot of effort is being focused on it. And then looking at the, creating a secure accessible entrance, the music on the school side, what we're calling the school side of the building, on one side of the brickworks is the, for those familiar with Reiki, is the, that center in the, or the area in the center of the building. So as you, one side we call the school side of the brickworks. The other side, we call the community center side, even though there are some school functions on the other side. But, and then code and accessibility upgrades. And so the first lower level of Reiki and Bracket Street is at the top of the page for those who come into the front of the building now, which is on this side right here. That is the current entrance where the administration is remote right now from the entrance. And so it's a locked door, but you're buzzed to come into this area and then further into this portion of the building. So, so the idea again here is that the, the green represents the new construction. The blue represents the heavy renovation and the gray is the light renovation. And, and the areas that don't have any shading don't, aren't anticipated to have any work done to them. So, and so what we're doing is creating the, the new entrance will happen up here. So instead of sloping down to the brickwork from here, you're actually going to enter at the level of this portion of the building right here. We will still have a ramp that goes along this side right here, down to that lower level into the library area. But we're going to renovate portions of the administration area of the building to create this new security vestibule and lobby. And then we're going to display some of that functionality to this addition to the conference room and portion of the administration office area right here. And then primarily, the design incorporates classrooms that ring around the perimeter of the school where they do now, but this will actually have them with walls. And so we've been mindful of where we put the walls to make sure that we have access to daylight from the exterior as much as we could to make, make it as, as sort of equal. And that the, the sizes of the spaces also, sizes of the rooms are intended to be very equal as well. So, and in addition to the classrooms themselves that go around the perimeter, we're also creating small group rooms, which are used for a whole variety of functions and extremely helpful and important for breakout work, as well as small group work, one-on-one sessions. And those are immediately adjacent to the classrooms and they kind of go around the interior of, of the plan as well. And then we are right now creating the OTPT room off a portion of the brickworks. And that's identified right here. And we'll kind of, the upper level is very similar in terms of how we're arranging the spaces. But one thing we're doing is on the front of the, like we're calling it the front for the Bracket Street side, where currently there's a healthcare partner that takes some of this space right here. And what we're doing is, is we're, and we're going to flip-flop with the music space, which happens on the other side of the building. And so, so this space right here, we're designing for the health partner. We'll go over to there and then the music program will come over here. So art and music will be right here above the administration area. And then we have a series of specialists in these smaller rooms on the, this portion of the building, as well as ELL, Title I, literacy. And then we have a series of other special rooms and then a computer lab in the center here. And then our classrooms ring the perimeter and then our small group rooms are off of the classrooms in this area as well. And so that, in addition, what we're doing is creating a stair, not only for egress for the health partner, but also so that they can have a direct access without having to come into the school as well. So they, the public that is coming in and using these services that is not affiliated with the school has the opportunity to use that stair. And it's, that space stays securely separate from the school. So that is the floor plan. Again, it largely stays the same floor plan in terms of its area, with a very small addition to the front at the entrance. And the, quickly going through the prioritized alternates, should we have additional funds? It was some acoustic treatment for the cafeteria and the brickwork. And so those are in those areas that we're not really doing any, any amount of work. But, but there are hard surfaces, it's a large open space and it can be loud. And so we're looking at an alternate to add some acoustic treatment to soften some of the noise issues in that area. Tied third second was another, our second pre-K classroom and some of the small group rooms enhancing their finishes. So, so they're a little more visually interesting and warmer environment than simply just a painted drywall. The fourth item is the community policing and warming kitchen renovation, which is identified on the first level over in the area where, where the current, where the policing area is currently, but this rearranges a little bit and creates a really a warming kitchen. The, the current space, it really couldn't be called a kitchen. It's pretty light in terms of the amount of equipment it has. But the alternate is to actually create a warming kitchen that has some kitchen equipment in it. And, and so it increases this area for that. The fifth one is to replace the interior doors that we weren't planning on replacing, similar to what we had carried in the Longfellow. The sixth one, we had shown a connector on the, where we are connecting the, the health partner space on that second level to the rest of the school building. It was to actually enclose that. And that is the sixth prioritized alternate. And then the last one is adding insulation to the exterior walls. So it's adding a new thermal barrier on the majority of the exterior walls of, of the school side of the building. Site logistics, because the addition is so small on, on the Reiki school, there's, there's really this, this black dashed line is indicating where we're showing the construction area. And, and it's again, it's a very, it's a very tight site. There's not a lot of space that we have, the parking lot exists right next to it. And we're trying not to impact that to the extent that we can. Parking is always an issue in that area of the city. But we will use the main entrance off of Clark Street during the construction itself. So instead of entering from our, our current Bracket Street side, the current entrance side, the idea is that we're going to shift that temporarily to the Clark Street side. And then the modulars will take up some of the open space, recreation space on the site. And those are identified here. And so they are conveniently located very close to one of the stair towers so that we can get in and out of the building as quickly as possible in that side right there. So students will move in and out. And so bus and parent drop-off will happen on the Clark Street side for the duration of the construction. The phasing for Reiki, again, is going to follow a very similar strategy that we are using for Longfellow. We'll have the three modular structures, which has six classrooms. And then we will cycle through the areas to be renovated. So we will move six classrooms out, we will construct those classrooms, and then we'll bring the students that have been in the modulars into the building. And then we will move another series of students out to the modulars. And so that, again, will take, take the same duration, so a 30-month construction, where we're taking advantage of having three summers, because we can get a lot more work done in the summertime, and the two school years. And so it's anticipated to start in the summer of 2021 and complete in the fall of 2023. And while this is still an early rendering, it just shows that there's a new, very defined entrance off of Bracket Street. And, and we're still looking, and we're working with the Green Committee to incorporate their thoughts on some of the features at the front of the building. And so thinking about trying to preserve as much of the infrastructure that's there now, a lot of the plantings that have been done over the years, trying to preserve those and trying to look at ways we can engage or incorporate the pergola structure into the, into some of the landscape features. And so it becomes a less stark element and it really becomes something more engaging and captivating for students. So that's, that's still being studied and refined a bit. But, but needless to say, it will be an addition that is very defined in the entrance. Instead of being sort of nondescript and down a slope, will be right off of the sidewalk as you come upon that portion of the building. So that completes kind of the deep dive into the scope of each of the three projects. We appreciate you staying with us for that. We have a few additional items to go through. One, and I'll, and I'll pause for a moment and see if there's any additional questions on the scope of the three schools. All right, moving into, so what, one of the items that we talked about that was a provision anticipated as a change to the Green Building Code that would have required the, a fair wage provision for the contractors to follow, is something that, that we incorporated in LISAT and, and that we're incorporating into these three school construction projects too. And so what it does is it looks at published minimum wages that the State Department of Labor publishes. And it says, it requires the contractor to have to pay at a minimum those wages. And it looks at their hourly rates, as well as their fringes. And it determines what those are to, for, for fair wage compensation for the, for the various divisions. And so it, it tells what the site contractors have to make and the electricians and the carpenters and the masons. And it spells out the different salaries that they need to be paid. And, and then what we do is we actually put provisions in the contract that require the contractor to submit verification that they're paying those wages during the construction. So we evaluate that. And so, so we include the, what those actually wages are, we publish them. And we'll show you an example of what that published wage looks like. And we include it in our bid documents. And then we also tell the contractor what we're requiring of them to submit as we pay them for the project. And so this is, this is what, and we apply to the Department of Labor, the main state Department of Labor. We apply, telling them the type of project and where it is, and they provide this to us. And so, and, and so that gives again, an hourly wage. All right, now we're getting to some of the bidding items. And one of the things that we're in the process of doing is bringing on some additional support to assist Steve Stillman and Doug Sherwood on overseeing the construction. Now that we're going to have, it's a lot of work with even one school construction project going on, like we've had it with LISAT for the last two years. But imagine that times three, so it's a lot of effort. And, and so as part of that, there's an owner's representative that comes on and assists in representing the owner's interest on the project and a clerk of the works. And so we're underway for the selection of that owner's representative and should have them onboard here before the holiday. And so I know Steve is, is working hard through that process right now. So Steve, I don't know if there's anything you want to say to that? And then Emily, I'll pause.
Maybe I'll ask my question.
Trying to get my mouse in the right spot with all these screens I've got going here. Owner's representative, for those who may not know, will work with Portland Public Schools very closely. And we can describe it in a broad term as, you know, project management and assisting us with the scope of the projects, working across our team with Mark, Lisa and Emily. And they generally have relationships and have worked with contractors and the subcontractors. And so they bring a real high-quality content to us as the owner. They'll assist us with scheduling, they'll assist us with project review, value engineering. And, and more importantly, they're in a position to sometimes be in conflict in a good way with some of the design process as we shake them out. So it's, it's invaluable that we have the right setup here to, to, to implement these projects. As you can see, the timing is crucial, the phasing, the movement of the students in and out of the school, the modulars, all of those aspects that directly affect our, our kids and the staff in the schools need to be closely monitored. And Doug Sherwood and I will be in Harvey Air and we'll be working really closely to communicate these issues and carrying them out on three projects in a pretty much concurrent atmosphere with, and LISAT's still in process. So we're going to interview four of the candidates that we, we had applied and put an application forward. So we're interviewing all four of those to select a, a firm or a person to be the owner's rep encompassing the remaining three schools. Along with the project management team, of course, we will have our attorneys, Drummond and Woodson, for availability of review of such things that may come up in fair wages. The owner's rep will work with us to identify and track fair wages and how we see the contractor and subs meeting those, those needs. And so it's basically implementing a team that can drive these projects home so that they're delivered on time, on budget, and with as few, as a few problems as we can work around. So we will interview these firms, one, two firms this Thursday and two firms the following Thursday. Then we will make a selection on our qualification and how we score these firms. Then we'll go into negotiation with the selected firm and negotiate a fee that's tied to the state of Maine, Bureau of Real Estate Management fees for such things as new construction, addition, renovation. There's a table that's used and we'll make a negotiation there. And once we have this owner's representative in place, we'll work with Mark and Lisa and Hammerman to structure a layer of clerk of the works who will be onsite on a regular basis to oversight and coordinate communications from the architects to the architects, owner's rep, Doug and myself. And that team will be responsible for the smooth operations, the safety of everybody involved, and to make sure that these moving parts are well-managed and communicated to all of the stakeholders. So I'm really excited to, and I'll use a nautical term here, is I'm excited to turn the rudder here and nudge it towards home port. So we have some exciting times ahead of us and I'm, I'm looking forward to it. And I know the community is, and here we go. So that's what I have to offer tonight.
Steve answered my question and I liked the "here we go" part.
Here we go. I am excited, I really am. We've been working, since I've been here, it's all three and a half years. It's been all beautiful. it's been all BFO on top of operations. But the appreciation and the desire and the love of the community in the schools in all aspects, education, the buildings, the people, this is, this is what is exciting, to see LICEF the way it looks today and the joy it's bringing to the students and the teachers and the community is, yeah, this is what it's about. So I'm excited, I'm resting up to be really ready for this stuff to start in early spring. So thank you all for your support, and I'm always, I'm always open to hear recommendations or, you know, ask for help when I need it. So, you know, this is something we're going to do together as a community, so thank you all.
Excellent. Okay. Is Fig Dura, am I cleared to go?
Yes, please.
Okay, very good. So one of the things that we're doing in addition to the bidding and schedule that we sort of showed, had shown on the bar chart is incorporating a qualification process to vet the contractors that are actually submitting pricing for the three projects. And so that has a series of steps that are involved that have to be done at the same time that we're getting the documents ready to go out to bid. And so our tentative timeline for doing that here is in December, January, and February. And so what we will do is advertise the projects, and that will be, very shortly, we'll start to see this advertisement. We're recording the final considerations for what this qualification process is going to look like with Drummond and Woodson. But the idea that we have to comply with, with the city's procurement requirements, and so they want to make sure we are following all the rules correctly. But, and so that's, that's going to take place where we solicit the contractors who are interested to submit prices, we ask them to provide qualifications for their ability to undertake this type of project. So once we get their qualification packages in, we'll review those. The city has a chance to review them. And then we respond to the contractors, either that we believe they are qualified to submit a price, or they are not qualified to submit a price. And then they have an appeals review process on their side too. So all that, like I said, that takes place while we're getting ready to put that first school project out to bid, because we will then only accept bids from the general contractors that are qualified to do the work, or as we deemed qualified and they submitted qualifications. And so that happens prior to our first bid. And as I said earlier, we're going to begin our first project in February, and the first bid is going to be due. And what we're trying to do is, and we'll talk about it in a minute here, is stagger the bids. And so that part of it has to precede the, or the qualifications has to precede any of the bidding schedules, so. And so that leads us to the staggered bidding. And so what, what we discussed doing was the Presumskut, as Lisa identified, has the shortest construction duration and has the most flexibility in terms of, if that schedule starts a little bit later than the other two, then we still have time to get all the work done with the least amount of impact to the, to the schedule itself. And so that, we said, okay, well, Presumskut we'll put third because of that. And right now, we're looking at Longfellow or Reiki being the first one or second one. There's really, they're both similar schedule, they're slightly, I mean, Reiki's a larger project, and so there's consideration for when that happens. But, but so, so we're looking to open the bids for the first school in February and award it in March. And then the second one would be open the bids in late February and award in late March. And the third one would be open the bids in middle of March and award late April. So the idea is to get all these under contract prior to the start of the summer construction season. The, the strategy of why we'd like to stagger the bids has to do with trying to create as much competition for the projects, as much interest from contractors, the larger pool of contractors. That usually translates into the best value. So if we have more contractors, we typically see that there'll be downward pressure because of just the market competition. There'll be a downward pressure on the pricing of the project. And so it's the same scope of work, but contractors are going to be more competitive if we have more contractors. And so that's the basic philosophy. It's, and so that, we've talked to several contractors as we've been getting ready to put these out to bid. And through those conversations, a lot of them have said that they don't have enough supervision management to administer across three school projects. They could likely do one or maybe two, but they don't have three separate teams to supervise three different school sites. And so with that, the idea was to allow a process by which the contractors could bid just one project and not necessarily have to bid all three at one time. And, and so again, what it will also do is it'll lower the total cost of all three schools together is around $36 million. But what, by breaking them up into smaller projects, some contractors are more interested in going after a $10 million project than a $36 million project, so will increase the interest of the contracting pool that are, they're interested in bidding on it. So that, that's our primary reason is to break them down to smaller sizes. And so we're going to stagger them, so. And the idea is that if we, if they don't get selected for the first one, if they don't have a low bid for the first project, we will still want enough time that they can bid on the second one or the third one. And so it's so that we may have contractors that are continuing to have an interest. So they may go after Reiki, and if they don't get that, they may go after Longfellow. If they don't get that, they could still go after Presumskut. So that's, that's sort of the strategy with that. At the time that these projects are going out to bid, there are two larger school projects that are going to draw the interest of the large contractor. So that if we held it as one large project for all three schools, we would be starting to compete with the larger contractor pool that's already going to be looking at two projects that are out on the market. And so one's in South Portland, it's not that far away, and one's in Auburn. So they're still in that central southern Maine area. And so we've, we've actually employed this, this strategy of staggering these bids in smaller packages, most recently in Yarmouth, where we had four schools and we broke them up into three projects. And it was interesting, the first one that we bid, we ended up getting actually five different bidders. And it was, it was only a $5 million project, but we had, again, it's because the dollar value is a little, we had a larger pool of contractors, and it came in just under budget. The second one, we actually had, it was a little bit larger, and we had seven bidders for it, and it came in again under, under budget. The third one was the largest one, it was about $28.3 million. So we had the fewest number of contractors that bid on it. We only had, had three bids for that one, and it came in over budget. And so sometimes there is this correlative relationship between the number of contractors and the, and the pricing. And so that was definitely the, the way that it came, it was borne out through on the Yarmouth project. What we ended up doing, and not unlike what we did at LICEF, is when, when it came in over budget at Yarmouth with the three bids on the larger project, we went through a series of value engineering on the project to bring it within budget. And so again, that was, that was the, the strategy that worked at Yarmouth. And so I'm going to pause for a minute on the staggering of the bids and see if there are any questions.
Talk briefly about that. So this is something that we brought to the DABC back in October, and it was not fully fleshed out. I think we, we sort of didn't give it the enough process. So we are bringing this back to the DABC this coming Thursday so that when this comes to you on the 22nd, it will have been vetted and hopefully endorsed by the DABC. If, you know, if it isn't, then we would, it would, you know, impact the way that we bid, but not the, so that's the, that's really the point of us putting this on the agenda today is to both, you know, let you know that that's what we're thinking, why we're thinking it, and to also let you know that we're going to bring it back fully vetted by the A B C.
Are there any questions from the board? I see Emily, Ms. Chung has a question. Go ahead, please.
I think you mentioned something about the reason why we're choosing to stagger the bids is because we might want to avoid the larger bidding pool for the projects in South Portland and Auburn High School. But would we not also be facing certain competitiveness with other smaller school projects in the area? I was wondering just like the difference of that.
Absolutely, it's a great question, Emily. And the advantage is still that there are more small contractors than there are large contractors by a very fair number. There's, there's just, there are many fewer contractors that have the capacity and, and organization to undertake large projects. So we have a, we still are advantaged by breaking it up to smaller ones, but it's a good, good question.
Are there any other questions? Yeah, I'm not seeing any.
And so Lisa, I think we'll cover just next steps, which should be a pretty short slide, I think, here.
I'll try to, I'll try to handle it. The next steps, as outlined on the screen, are the DABC meeting. We'll be meeting with them on December 17th, as well as the school board action to vote on going to bid will happen, occur on December 22nd. So those are the next steps, who we have outlined on the meeting agendas. That will open up to any additional questions that anyone has.
Ms. Bundler.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I just have a few clarification after the bid. When we got awarded after the bid, those are going to be the, the, those are the, it's going to be the, the end, or everything can be increased with the, the increase of the, the material of construction at the end. Or those going to be the bid, and we're going to go to start all construction and all the renovations. So I, I. Have any additional expenses after, after the bid? Or what's going to happen? Because we see a lot of increase on the, on the constructions right now. So anything going to come and, and the end, or after the bid being awarded is just the old, the end of, so I mean, what I want to ask, if we have some, some more expenses may come for any increase of, of the material instruction for the construction or not after the bid.
I think essentially you're asking if, if the projects come in over budget, potentially what, what occurs? Or are you thinking there are additional costs that may come after the bids are open?
Yes, yes, yeah.
I think that that's the, that's the purpose of the bidding is that that is the cost associated with the project. So once we have that, unless there are, you know, major issues that require a change order or something along those lines subsequently, what we actually get as the lowest bid is what will be the costs associated with the project.
Okay, I get, all right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you.
And Ms. Bundler, I'll just also add that there's a contingency, both for each individual project and then for the overall project.
Oh, all right. All right.
You do have the, as backstops.
Okay, yeah.
Touch on those contingencies real quick. I think that's important for the board to fully understand.
Yeah, the, and so what, what we do, sometimes we sort of build like the analogy of, you know, if you're renovating something from your, your home and contractor gets into, starts in the construction and then discovers something in the wall that you didn't know was there, and then they have to do some changes to the, to what they thought they were going to have to do. We set aside a pot of money to be able to handle those changes that might come up during construction. And so, so it, and what we do is we typically assign a value of about 10% of the construction value as a contingency, and we use 5% of that, that helps us regulate for the bid itself, and we reserve 5% during construction to accommodate things that come up, any changes that come up. And so if we, if we don't use the 5% in the bid to somehow buffer any changes in the market conditions, we roll that into the, the construction contingency money. So, so that's, that's money that's set aside for what if, things that might come up, contingent things that might come up during the construction, so we call it a contingency.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Any other questions? And then I just want to clarify for the board again that, so at our December 22nd meeting, we'll be voting to authorize a superintendent to proceed with the development of design specifications and seek bids for Longfellow, Reiki, and Presumskut. For new student reps and additional board, new board members, if you want to sit and, I know the superintendent offered this as well, but I'm happy to walk you through any details. There was a lot of information tonight and help familiarize you further with the, with the projects. So just reach out if that, if I could be helpful in that process. And I want to thank the Harriman team, Mark, Lisa, and Emily, as well as Mr. Stillfin for, and I see Mr. Sherwood is on as well tonight. Thank you so much for the presentation. And it's so exciting to be this close to sending these projects to bid, so thank you so much.